Okay, if we can all rise for a moment of silence and a salute to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome, everybody, to the May 30th, 2019 work session and legislative meeting of the North Hill School District. Well, we opened the meeting, we had, just before we do open the meeting, for the board member comments, so we did hold an executive session this evening in the boardroom, and that was to discuss personnel and legal matters. So now we can move on to board member comments, if there are any. Ellie?
First, I wanted to say congratulations to the class of 2019. Graduation is tomorrow. And then my friends over at Westview Elementary asked me to mention that they have a summer safety fair coming up. It is Saturday, June 8th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and it's being organized by Westview, but they're hoping that families from all four of the elementary schools, and the high school and the middle school will attend. There will be snacks, games, a bouncy house, and there will be demonstrations and giveaways from local emergency and nonprofits dedicated to the physical and emotional safety of families. They are also still looking for some volunteers, so if there are any board members that are interested in signing up for a slot to hand out ice cream tickets, I am signed up, you can volunteer with me.
Okay. I'll talk to you about that afterwards.
Okay, yeah.
Mr. Nudie?
Today, Westview had their sixth grade graduation, courtesy of Mrs. Stefanco and the rest of the Westview staff. As usual, it is very good, was very patriotic, and it's a great sendoff from the sixth grade moving up to the middle school, so I hope they continue the program.
Great, thank you. Any other comments? I do want to mention that we have Mr. Kelly on the phone today, participating in the meeting, so just a matter of record. We can now move on to public comments on the agenda items only, and I'm told some folks have signed up to speak to the board on public.
I'm signed up.
Okay.
I signed up about, I don't want to put on the agenda tonight, you know what I'll find out when it is, about this tax increase.
Yeah, we, okay, we could discuss it after, after the agenda, because it's not on the agenda tonight.
It is on the agenda, yes.
The budget. This is the work session, so it'll be moved on to the action, so.
It's being listed on page eight, so I don't know why it wouldn't be on the agenda.
Okay, I'm sorry, no, I, I, oh, okay, for the resolution, okay. All righty, you could, if you want to, ma'am, please take the microphone and if, state your name and address for the record, and the floor is yours.
Good evening, my name is Patricia Papadon, and I live on Buck Hill Road. I'm going to tell you guys something. Do you seriously think that the taxpayers in this township are not going to be upset about this? The sixth year, what, sixth or seventh year in a row that you want to raise our taxes? How about if we do some budget cuts? Let's take a look at that, okay? Because I'm going to tell you something, you all get voted in, and you can be voted out. This is not going to fly in this township. You know what happens? Nobody comes to this meeting to complain, so you keep doing the same thing over and over again. And it's ridiculous. What I don't understand, we have all this new construction in the township. You have the townhouses on Buck Hill, you have the townhouses on Gas Road, you have the townhouses up on Cemetery Lane, and I know that there's other ones, I'm not even sure if they started the ones down by Monarelli Stadium. Where's all this money going, folks? I don't understand this. You have all this revenue, new revenue coming in all the time, we're constantly fighting with the commissioners about new construction and traffic. This is not going to fly. I'm telling you it's not. If I have to go to everybody and the fourth ward and knock on every house and have them come to these meetings, I'm going to do that. So you better do something about looking at the budget and doing some cuts, because I'm not standing for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. Is there, please, if you'd be kind enough, state your name and address, ma'am, for the record.
My name is Denise Piveronis, I live on 98 Buck Hill Road. I'm about to tax, too. You guys give everybody on McKnight Road and everybody else discounts of them putting their businesses in. How about our discounts? We can't afford this either. I went over and I fought the tax for the water company about them raising them bills. These people in the township can't afford to feed their children, and they're helping them. We have backpacks for the schools because these people can't afford to feed their kids, they take food home. Shame on you. And I'm looking at every one of you guys that did this, that voted this, saying, "You can go home and your kids can sit there and have a meal." Well, how about the kids that don't have a meal every day? How about us that take food over for these kids to have food on the weekends that don't have food? How about the kids in the summertime that don't have food? And you're going to sit there and raise our taxes again? We don't get taxed, we don't get a pay raise to afford your hike every year. But we have all this revenue coming into North Hills, and what are we seeing out of it? Nothing. Nothing at all. The cops don't do their jobs, but you guys are doing, your job is sitting and voting in, but shame on you, and I hope you go home and you think about it, because the water company did do something about it when I went over there, and I fought for them. So before you vote this in, I hope you wish, and I hope you think about this, when the kids don't have nothing to eat at night and your family does. But all I'm asking you to do is to please think about this before you keep raising these taxes. We've got enough revenue coming in here that you don't need to raise these taxes every single year. I don't have to pay for the pension of these teachers every single year. These teachers make a lot of money. I don't make that kind of money. My family don't make that kind of money, but these teachers do, and don't say that they don't deserve it, because they do. My kid graduated from North Hill School District, I was very happy with his education. But you need to think about what you're doing for the people that cannot afford these tax hikes every single year. So thank you very much.
And I just want to add to the record, I am an alumni of this school, I went to class this afternoon, I went to North Hill High School.
Thank you, thank you.
I care about this school.
I, we know that, and thanks for speaking your piece, thank you.
I'll ask you to do, to just think about it.
Sure.
You've got a lot of people here that can't afford to, if you keep hiking every day, shame on you.
Thank you.
And I'm looking at you. I'm not here, I'm not home.
Next, we have the present, we have a presentation by Dr. Nicole Bazila, an update on special education.
Okay, thank you. Tonight, I wanted to talk about a focal point of the Special Education Department this year was our transition program at the high school, the services that we provide students with disabilities as they prepare for graduation. So our transition services, what we do for our students at the high school with disabilities, we help them network and explore options through field trips, experiences, and planned activities. We identify their needs for transition, whether they're looking at post-secondary education, career and technical placements, employment, as well as independent living. We try to strengthen and simplify those connections and relationships that we build with outside communities. Also, the Pennsylvania Office for Vocational Rehabilitation, who can help students maintain, gain employment, and looking at those early-reach classes in my work opportunities. We coordinate testing with outside agencies to, again, assist with that post-secondary transition plan. We assist with application for social security, as well as college applications, and then we also monitor the Chapter 339 Plan and make sure that our curriculum is aligning with that, so, again, we can ensure that we're providing these opportunities for our students. Some of the needs that we discovered this year, we did a short needs assessment, which included surveys to teachers, students, and parents. Something that we came up with was to really look at a transition grid for students in grades eight through 12. That way, we can provide those families and students with a roadmap of activities that we want to accomplish each year as they set forth towards their goals of graduation. We talked about bringing early reach into the district, which is a partnership with the Office of Vocational Rehabilitation, OVR, and they talk to our eighth graders and work on some of those soft skills that they will need moving forward when we're talking about employment, and, again, you know, what life looks like after high school. The transition grid, again, we created this using grade-level feedback from those surveys, and there's some examples here, eighth, ninth, 10th grade, as well as junior and senior year. Everything's broken up into three categories, which are the required categories under IDEA when you're servicing students with disabilities, and that's education, employment, and independent living. So what we did was, we went through each grade level, we looked at the classes that are offered at our high school through the Program of Studies, some of those requirements, and we came up with different activities, as well as classes, and field opportunities for students to try and, and make that plan as they progress through. So you can see that eighth grade is a lot that has to do with exploratory skills, and what do I want to do post-secondary? Do I want to go to a trade school? Am I interested more in competitive employment? Do I need to work on some of those independent living skills? And they narrow the focus a little more as we move through each grade level. So you can see, part of that is research, some of it is updating resumes, touring Beatty and looking at some different opportunities, participating and meeting with OVR, always looking at our class schedules, different career assessments, and, again, improving those self-advocacy, advocacy skills across the board as our students progress grade to grade. So the junior year looks a little different, same basic concept, but, again, some of these activities are starting to narrow at this point, and then that also takes us into our senior year as well, where we're looking at fairs and events, we're obtaining recommendation letters, looking at SATs, if it is a child who's moving into post-secondary education, the FAFSA, and different forms that they're looking for at the college level. Do we participate in mock interviews to prepare them for some of the experiences that they're about to have? Looking at employment information, making sure they have their driver's license, so really supporting them in all areas across the board when we look at education, employment, and independent living. So OVR and early reach, as I mentioned, the Office of Vocational Rehabilitation provides these services to students with disabilities to prepare for, obtain, and maintain employment. So we have a direct relationship with them, where they meet with every senior who's identified as having a disability and help them with those skills. As I mentioned, we also started the early reach program this year, where we target students in grades eight, nine, and 10, and these classes focused on soft skills, obtaining and seeking employment, as well as interview skills. This year alone, 121 new students in the district have participated within this program. So our numbers have grown drastically, I think, since we've added that early reach component. My work, my work is a new program that we started this year in partnership with OVR, it's 100 percent funded by OVR. This is a pilot program that's matching our high school students with disabilities to paid summer employment within their community. So this year, we secured contracts with Ross, Westview, and Bellevue municipalities, and on the next slide, we can see that students have obtained jobs doing clerical work, maintenance, working with kids at summer camp. So, again, we're providing opportunities within our community for our students to work on some of these skills and could eventually turn into full-time employment if that's the direction that the student chooses. Through the transition program, also, I mentioned coordination of testing, so we do a lot of testing for our students through OVR. We arrange with the psychologists when they can test, we help the families fill out any forms that they need to fill out, and all of these assessments are what link students with these services outside of high school so that they can work towards that employment post-secondary in whatever their goals may be in those areas. The other thing that our transition program's really working on is assisting families with applying for benefits for those students who are eligible to collect social security, and also focusing strongly on college applications. So our transition coordinator will get the information for families about social security, explain what those benefits will look like, help them fill out all of the documentation. We complete things as a district that show the path that the student has taken, and then social security makes that determination as to if they qualify and if they're awarded or not. So that's a big part of what we do for our students. When looking at colleges, we've set up a lot of tours this year, we've assisted students and families with enrollment, and probably the biggest piece for students who are entering post-secondary education is to link them with the Office for Disabilities at that college or university. There's a lot of services that are available through college and university programs that students don't often know about. Their direct services from high school don't necessarily transfer over, so we're working with families to get them enrolled and really learn about the supports and services that are available for their child when they move to post-secondary education. Keeping up to date, we're constantly looking at that 339 Plan, that's from the Department of Education, where we're looking at college and career readiness for all students, but we look at it specifically from the transition piece so that we can make sure that we're overlapping, we're connecting, we're focusing on what our student needs are, and still meeting those requirements that are outlined within Chapter 339. Always looking to make our program better, we did a lot of touring this year of other campuses and other school districts to see what they're doing to provide transition students, or transition services to students, and then trying to adopt those ideas and practices and see if that's something that we can implement here within. Some of the examples, as I mentioned, our services, you know, are really focusing on post-secondary education, independent living, as well as workforce and employment. So some of these services require experiences for our kids, so fairs, field trips, and events. We hosted and attended numerous job fairs this year, education fairs, resource fairs, looking at different apprenticeships, going to local workplaces, and taking our students to a variety of training opportunities. Job Fair, we held this in district twice, both before the holidays and then the summer to obtain employment for our kids, so Chick-fil-A, FedEx, PNC Bank, Best Buy, those are some of the examples of local businesses that participated, and we had a number of students who walked away with employment for both the holidays and then also for the summer. We, in conjunction with other districts in the northern area, participate in the Northern Area Transition Fair, this occurs every year at Beatty, and we're introducing post-secondary education options, employment opportunities to our families. So CCAC was there, LaRoche, the Builders Guild of Western PA, PA Career Link, ACHIVA, AIU Travel Training, so, again, many different organizations, not just from our community, but countywide, and that's the nice thing, I think, with partnering with other school districts, that we're all bringing in a variety of resources for our families. We also planned a resource fair, this was to take place on curriculum night, so this was for our parents at the high school. The resources were not limited to students with disabilities, but would benefit all, all families, they were inclusive for everyone. So we had different food banks that were set up to attend, different rehabilitation services, talking about student loans, and just really anything, again, that is transition-focused for our kids. The Trades and Apprenticeship Fair, we held one at the high school, but we also attended a trade fair this year. This allowed students to apply on the spot to a variety of internship opportunities, and, again, on the side, you can see the Sprinkler Fitters Union, PennDOT, the Brick Layers, Carpenter's Union, Steam Fitters, everyone was in attendance, and, once again, our students walked away, many of them, with opportunities that are available to them for this summer. Different events that we also attended, the purpose here with the field trips and the events is for some of our students with higher needs to gain that firsthand look at what a job really is, how things work behind the scenes within a local business, what type of skills you may need to have in order to work there. So we toured and talked at PNC Park through a lot of different venues there and different offices. We did downtown travel training, so learning how to use the PAT bus, following that bus schedule, as well as how to use the T. We visited a local construction site where they were able to show us, you know, what they were doing in terms of this person being in charge of blueprints, and this person looking at materials, and this person is laying out different plans. A restaurant visit where we saw in the kitchen, you know, what happens from food prep to when orders come in, and just really how the backside of a restaurant works. We participated in mock interviews at the AIU, which, again, is aimed to give our kids an opportunity to practice some of those skills, and then we also participated in transition lectures through CCAC. So in conclusion, and that was quick, I know, but our transition program has really grown, and, as I said, that was really a focal point this year for our high school. We had a new transition coordinator, who I'd like to thank, Mr. Evan King, who had a lot of great ideas, and really, you know, looked at everything that local districts around us were doing, got feedback from our parents and our students on what we would like to see, and we have a lot of great things planned moving forward so that we can continue to grow in this area.
Thank you, Dr. Bazila, anybody have any questions? Comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, we can move on to education, Mrs. Mathis.
Thank you. We have several items tonight to be added to the legislative meeting agenda. So the first is a request for the board to approve a textbook adoption for the 2019 to 2020 school year. It's a psychology textbook, and it is a line item in the proposed 2019 to 2020 budget. The costs associated with this textbook adoption are still being finalized, we're negotiating with a vendor currently. The next item is a request that the board approve the annual concurrent enrollment agreement with Community College of Allegheny County for welding technology program. The terms of the agreement will be from April 1st, 2019, to April 1st, 2022, and are relative to students who meet all qualifications to participate in the program. The next is an affiliation agreement with California University of Pennsylvania, which allows the district to accept student teachers from California University of Pennsylvania. There are no costs associated with this affiliation agreement. Next, we have a request that the board approve the acceptance of a $5,000 donation from Plymouth Rock Management Company. A parent of a first-grade student from McIntyre Elementary School, Mrs. Mackenzie Wetzel, nominated Ms. Jill Horner's first, Ms. Jill Horner, who is a first-grade teacher, for a teacher appreciation contest, which was sponsored by the Plymouth Rock Management Company. Ms. Horner was selected as the winner for the state of Pennsylvania, congratulations, and as part of the award, she will receive a spa gift card, and the district will receive a $5,000 donation to be used for upgrading the teachers lounge at McIntyre Elementary School. The next four items I have are all related to the music curriculum updates for next year. We discussed these at the February 21st board meeting. The music curriculum, we have a six-year curriculum review cycle, and music was up this year for some changes, so I'll go through these quickly. The first is a request that the board award the bid for 100 elementary music chairs to Delaney and Associates in the amount of $3,159, and reject all bids for the music stands and the choral risers. The, the lowest bidders for the choral risers based their bid on a three-tier model that required assembly, so this was not what we were looking for, so we're going to put those out to bid again. The next item is a request that the board approve the purchase of replacement choral risers from Wender Corporation in the amount of $35,366. I just want to note that the current choral risers that we're using are over 25 years old and have well exceeded their life expectancy, so this is a good investment that will last a long time. The next item is a request that the board award the bids for the music instruments to the bidders identified on the attached, totaling $151,835, and specifically reject the bids for the 4-4 tuba and Glocken spiel for the high school. This, these instrument purchases are related to our growing music program, including our increases in our elementary music programs, and most of these instruments that are being replaced are at least 30 years old. The next item is a request that the board award the bid for choral robes to Harif Jones in the amount of $22,856. Again, if Ms. Cozera was here, she would say, as she's told me many times, that the current robes are robes that she actually wore when she was in chorus in high school, so they're, they're over 25 years old, and...
I saw her name on the back of one of those, yes.
Yeah, so, she's going to be disappointed, but...
Sandy's older than 25?
Yeah, she is, she is. Don't tell anybody. Anyway, so the amount is $22,856. I move that the education items one through eight be added to the legislative meeting agenda for approval.
Second. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All done?
Yeah.
No, Ms. Cozera not being here, I'll just take athletics and activities. There is one, one item under the athletics, it's a, it's a resolution to recognize the, just go back, it's a resolution to recognize the girls' soccer boosters as an official booster organization. Unless anybody has any questions, this is pretty standard procedures. Okay, that being said, I will make a motion to add to the athletics and activities items at the resolution number 2019-11.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Nudie, it doesn't appear we have anything under Beatty, or Mr. Kelly on the phone, or do you have anything to add that, any comments?
Just last night, here at the middle school, we had the Beatty graduation or recognition ceremonies, I believe it was what, about 300, 300 handshakes, and it went very well, and I think we will be a permanent venue for them.
Great. Okay, we can move on to personnel. Mrs. Spade is not here this evening, I'll take personnel. There are, although these personnel items are discussed in executive session, there are eight action items, we're going to vote and approve these, these are just not to add to the legislative meeting, we're going to make a motion to approve these personnel items. So I'm going to make a motion that we approve items one through eight, as far as the agenda goes, and I'll ask for a second. Second. Is there any discussion on that? Hold in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Manorino?
I would just like to announce that we, with that motion and approval, just hired Kevin McKeeranen as our new high school principal. Kevin is with us tonight, so Kevin, thanks for coming. Mr. McKeeranen joins North Hills from West Allegheny School District, where he served as principal of West Allegheny High School and in the administration for the last decade. During his time at West Allegheny, he was instrumental in leading significant academic reform to ensure every graduate has a viable post-secondary plan. His experience and dedication to preparing students for the real world will only benefit our district. Prior to West Allegheny, Kevin taught social studies at Northgate Middle School, Senior High School, and was the Varsity Boys head basketball coach. We're thrilled to welcome him to the team, and he is an addition, he's an added bonus as he lives in Ross Township. Kevin and his wife have three children, all of whom attended McIntyre Elementary School this school year. Also with us tonight is Hannah Mintz-Moyer. Hannah has just been hired as one of our high school assistant principals. Hannah joins the North Hill School District from Swickley Academy, where she taught honors, algebra, and geometry, and she served as House Cavalier Dean. Prior to this, she taught mathematics in the Seneca Valley School District. Hannah will be an asset to our administrative team, her ability to work with data and analytics will undoubtedly help us to uncover proven ways to improve academic performance and increase student achievement. Hannah lives in Wexford with her cat, Charlie. Welcome, Hannah. And also, welcome Jessica Sapsara. Dr. Sapsara is our assistant elementary school principal, and she joins North Hills from neighboring Shaler Area School District, where she was a teacher at the Shaler Area Middle School and mathematics department head for seventh and eighth grades. She began her teaching career at Pittsburgh's Career Connections Charter High School, where she quickly acquired leadership opportunities, holding the titles of Director of Title I Services, Assessment Coordinator, and Director of Curriculum and Assessment. Her involvement in the community was very attractive to us, and were her, and so too were her leadership skills and extensive background in mathematics. She is also a Ross Township resident. With two young sons, Dr. Sapsara is ecstatic to be working in the district that she calls home, and we are excited to have her, and she will split her time across the district's four elementary schools. Not with us tonight was, is John Lesjack. John is also hired as a North Hills High School Assistant Principal, and John will be joining us from his time as Assistant Principal in the Brookville Area School District, where he spent the last three years as an Assistant Principal across four buildings. Primarily, he was assigned to the junior, senior high schools, and John consistently developed strategies, implemented programs, to significantly reduce student disciplinary issues, and assist students struggling academically. John previously taught world history at Butler Area Intermediate High School, and he and his wife live in Butler, and they are expecting their first child due this summer, so we welcome those four administrators to our team.
On behalf of the board, welcome. We're glad you're here, we really are, we're pleased, and consider yourself special, because a lot of people obviously applied for these positions. That's great, great, thank you. Okay, we could move on to community and intergovernmental relations. There is one item this evening, that's the appointing of voting delegates for the PSBA Delegate Assembly Meeting Friday, October 18th, 2019, and those, if I could pull this up here. We, I guess we are, we are assigning a couple of delegates this...
Right, it's here.
Okay, oh, oh, okay, so there's, there's three, there's three of them on there, Sandy, Lou, and Ally are going to be, we're actually proposing that those delegates be, be, be signed up for the meeting in October. So I'm going to make a motion to add that to the... So I'm going to make a motion to add that to the agenda for the athletics and activities.
Second.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I was looking, I was looking, I have no one.
I have a question. Were we limited to just three delegates?
Yes.
Yes. Limited to three delegates, but...
Based on school size.
Okay. But more people can go.
Right. I was just curious to see if we, for the delegates, that we were limited to just three.
Right.
Okay.
That's more than a lot of other districts.
Yeah. So welcome and then congratulations. I'm sure that that's, that's a very, from my perspective, is a very responsible position because you do vote on a lot of things that are important to public schools in Pennsylvania, that's for sure. So thank you for your service there. Legislative, we don't have anything under there. Mr. Newt, unless you have anything that you'd like to bring?
Nothing to add.
Okay, there's nothing under, Mr. Kelly, we don't have anything under policy at this point unless you have something to add?
No, there's nothing under policy.
Thank you. We could move on to finance and that would be Dr. Nolish.
Okay, thank you. As you can see, we've got a large finance agenda, so a couple of things. Before I introduce it, I do want to point out that we're not going to vote on any of these things tonight. The motion I'm going to make at the end of presenting them is that we're going to add them to the finance agenda for the next meeting, for the legislative meeting. That's the first thing. I'm also going to suggest that we approach it in a different order than what, than how it's presented. I think there's an awful lot on here and I think it makes sense to kind of talk about the routine items first and then come back to the ones where we're going to have some more discussion and conversation, which is specifically the budget, which is obviously a difficult one this year. So I'm going to start with number four, which, the first group of items, there's four items and these are what occur every month. Basically, it's paying our bills. Number four is the general fund bills and those are going to run from the period of April 25th through May 31st. Number five is food service fund bills, again, from April 25th to May 31st. Number seven is budget transfers for the month. And number eight is payroll for the month of May. The next group is also, it's got five items in it and those are things that we do annually. The first one is number six, which is the scholarship fund bills, and these are funds that have been established by individual donors in some past years. They're administered by the school district under the terms of the donor-established funds and each may, according to those restrictions by the donors, students are selected to receive those funds and then the school district disperses them. So this is something that happens annually. Number nine is our general insurance approval and that's our annual renewal of the school district's insurance that is negotiated by our brokers. The insurance premiums for 2019 to 2020 are going to be $187,685, which is more than the $173,300, $892, so they went up about 8%. So as you can see, our costs on some pretty required things are going up and that's already accounted for in our proposed budget. Number 10 is the workers' compensation insurance. Again, that's the annual renewal of the workers' comp negotiated by our brokers. That one is actually decreasing a little bit by 2.2%, so that is going to help us a little bit in the, you know, in the budget challenge. They are, however, subject to final salary audits at the end of each year, so it's, it's always possible that, that could shift around a little bit. Number 11 is the appointment of the treasurer for 2019 to 20, 2020. So every year we appoint a treasurer for the coming fiscal year and so once again, we're recommending that our treasurer is our chief financial officer, Mr. David Hall. And number 12 is the facilities use schedule, fee schedule. And this is again, every year in the spring, we set the facility's rental use fee schedule for the, and the labor rates fee schedule for the next fiscal year. So there's two parts to it. One is the rental rate, which is the use of the room, and one is the cost of labor. And the whole purpose of these fees is really just to cover the school district's cost. We have great facilities, we want the community to be able to use them, so we don't, it is never our purpose to try to make money on facilities rentals, but we don't want to lose money either. We need to just keep everything in balance. So we do try to keep them affordable for community groups when we set those, when we set the rates. So for the rental rates, we're recommending that they remain unchanged for all of the facilities, with the exception of the auditorium rental rate. The current rate for our auditorium's rental is $935 and that is well below other districts in the area. And there have been some concerns that have been coming up that we are probably lagging behind on recovering the wear and tear of the use of those facilities because they're very heavily-used facilities and they're wonderful spaces. We want people to continue to use them, but we also need to keep pace with keeping them at the level of quality that folks and our students can use them. So the proposed increase brings that fee up to $1,200, which is still less than half of the rental fee charged by other districts. So we still think it's a pretty good bargain for the community and we hope that the, you know, the increase will not be out of line for, you know, the folks that are using it. Everything else is going to stay flat. For the labor rates, we've got an average increase of 3% and the only exception to that increase is a little bit higher is the security staff because now that we actually have school police, we're increasing those to bring them in balance and cover the actual cost of the school police. And I would like to point out that the per-hour rate that we charge for custodial fees, security staff, the school police, and the technical staff are all set at the equal amount. So again, we've worked really hard to try to keep those reasonable so people can access the facilities, but also so that we don't, as a district, lose money on them. So now we come to the tricky part, which is the budget resolution. And item number one is the resolution that establishes the tax rate at 18.65 mils. Item number two establishes the homestead/farmstead exclusion. And item number three is the final approval of the 2019/2020 budget at $83,926,406. Just a couple of general comments on what is in those. It is the same mileage and budget rate that we talked about last time. It's the .4 mil increase, which is a 2.2% increase, and it will raise $1,040, $40,000 in revenue for the district. We did say that we were going to go back and take a look at this. We have taken a look at this. We have not seen any changes that, or any, in any of the data or information that we have gathered that suggests changing it. We are still dealing with a large number of fixed costs from the state, pensions, charter schools, we talked a lot about that last time, so that's all still in there. When you look at the increase, it is $54 per year for the average homeowner, which is, the average home in our district is $135,000. That's before the homestead exemption. Once the homestead exemption is factored in, the increase is closer to about $48 per year because most of our residents own their own home and will be eligible for that in that they're, it's their primary residence. That's the homestead, it's your primary residence. So they will be eligible for that exemption. So it's an increase that works out to less than about a dollar a week for the average homeowner. Now, we don't take this lightly. I understand that people are, it's very hard for anybody to talk about a tax increase. I think every single one of us in this room and in this community have had times in our lives when we have been in difficult financial situations, you know, as, as the individuals spoke at the beginning of the meeting. And so I think that every one of us has a concern about raising taxes and I think we all, none of us take it lightly. So I do want to make, you know, I do want to bring that up. But at the, so, and that's part of the reason why we do the budget process as we do. Our goal every time is to have a zero tax increase. We start with that and then we say, and we say, okay, what do we actually need so that we can continue to provide our students with a solid education and that we can also run the district in a basis of fiscal responsibility? Because in the long run, if we cut corners, if we do give into temptation, like so many other school districts do, to run unbalanced budgets, to avoid tax increases, you're setting yourself up for much larger tax increases down the line and more pain for families and more difficulties for the district and you're risking your, your property values and your students' education. So as difficult as it is to vote for a tax increase and to advocate a budget that has a tax increase, you know, speaking for myself personally, I feel that it's the responsible thing to do for our district and so I'm going to recommend to move it forward. One other thing that I'd like to leave you with, a number that I'd like to just kind of put in perspective. When you look back at the last six years, we have had incremental tax increases, there's no denying that that is the reality, but I'd also like to point out that in that same period, our elementary school population has increased by a total of 476 students. Think about 476 students. That's the population of an entire elementary school that we've absorbed into our buildings, into our district, into our budget. So I think that we have worked very hard to try to minimize the budget impact to the taxpayers and still provide everyone who's in the district with the kind of quality education that North Hills has always stood for and I hope will always continue to stand for. So that's my context for the budget and I know there may be some conversation and disagreements, but with that being said, I'm going to point out that the superintendent recommends and I so move that the finance items, numbers 1 through 12, be added to the legislative meeting agenda for approval.
Second.
Any other discussion? Hold in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll move it to the, for the, right.
Moving it to them.
All righty. We can now move on to support services. Mr. Burnett?
Well, I also have a rather large list, as Dr. Nolish did, but mine's a little easier, I think, to deliver than, than the budget and the financial, but...
The banders.
There, there's a couple, the first item is we're building out a sensory room, autistic room at the middle school. The nice thing about this is it's going to be built by our in-house maintenance crew, so it'll be a large savings in, in expenses overall instead of having to have to go out to bid, so it's going to be done internally. We're also building out a consumer science kitchen in the high school, which will also be handled in-house, so thanks to the skills that our maintenance staff has, we're able to complete these at a much lower cost. We're going to replace the curtains in Westview and the middle school at the stage, the stage curtains. Chris is clapping his hands back there. I think it's well, long overdue. I don't think they're as old as the choral gowns or, but they're pretty close to it, so maybe we could save that material and make new gowns out of it for the choral program and save some money there.
Just like the Sound of Music.
Maybe our in-house maintenance crew could do that.
Yeah.
We'll see, we'll see what we can do. But, and we're also going to be doing, replacing some floors with some vinyl floor and some carpeting in Westview and the middle school. The high school corridor stabilization, if any of you have been over to the cafeteria in the high school and where it meets the main hallway coming, I think it's hallway 1 or A, isn't it? It's sunk a little bit, so we're going to have that taken care of, which is definitely needed. It's been like that for a while, so long overdue. We have bids out for the asphalt maintenance to elementary campus parking lots, just various. Also, part of that will be some sealing. In addition, I think last month or the month before, Mr. Swindell was here and explained that not only after we repair these, we need to seal these annually, which will save us in the long run, so that's going to be part of that process also. I also want to reject the bids for the replacement of the HVAC controls at the administration building. And just to let everybody know that the lunch and breakfast and morning care prices will remain the same for this coming school year. So I would motion to add support service items to the legislative meeting agenda.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Burnett. Before we close the meeting, is there anybody who would like to make public comments on non-agenda items or address the board? There being none, meeting adjourned. Wow, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.